All right. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we've provided a revised, revised agenda for your review. There have been a couple items which have been added to the agenda. Item number one is to, is K under consent agenda to approve compensation for permanent easement for St. Nicholas Catholic Church. Due to the timing on the downtown recon project and the timing to our next meeting, we wanted to get it on the council agenda tonight. The church just approved it earlier this week. And then item L, which is reapproval for the third time of the master contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Elko New Market related to the municipal state aid program. If you recall, they had us approve an agreement, then they said, oops, we gave you the wrong agreement, so we approved it again. Then they said, oops, you guys need to do it by resolution. So you guys have already approved this a couple times already, you just have to do it by resolution.
Well, we're getting good at it. Any other changes that cover everything?
That would be everything.
Motion?
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
By Kate?
Second.
Who was that, Amanda?
Amanda.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements.
Skip.
You know, I have a couple things I want to say. I think Tom does as well. Tom, you want to go first?
Sure. So Chief Brady Jewell started with us in March of 2019, and I have to say that from the very beginning, Chief Jewell embodied the essence and core of leadership and community engagement, which is core to our policing philosophy. His infectious optimism, the glass is always half full in Brady's world, and the sky is always blue. His outgoing personality and his approachability made him not only an exceptional leader for the police department, but also a true representative of the department's values and our city's values. His background and experience served as the cornerstone on which the department has continued to grow and evolve. Over the past several years, Brady's dedication and hard work has been nothing short of exemplary. It's been an honor and privilege to work with him as his city administrator. He has been committed to the community and continuously building upon the community values-based philosophy of the department. Under his guidance, we witnessed the growth and maturing of the police department with the addition of new positions, the establishment of crucial partnerships with other entities, and increased engagement within the community. During the last several years, he's been busy. When he started, he was immediately put into the position of having to build a new police department, a process that had just gotten underway. The department also added four officer positions in his time year, and during, and also a sergeant position, and during that time, he's hired eight police officers to fill newer vacant positions. His impact also extended beyond just our community. He emerged as a respected leader within the county. He served as the president of the Scott Cover Chief Law Enforcement Officer Association, and he's currently director on the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association Board. His initiatives for engagement in the community included the ever-popular Lunch with the Chief program at Eagleview Elementary, and his involvement with organizations like Southern Valley Alliance have touched the lives of many and continue to demonstrate his commitment to service the law enforcement field and his general compassion as a human being. As Chief Jewell embarks on his new chapter in his law enforcement journey, we're sad to see him go, but we are profoundly grateful for the legacy he has left. His dedication and passion have had an impact on the department and on the community. As the saying goes, leave a place better than you found it, and this would certainly be the case here. It's with deep appreciation and heartfelt gratitude that, on behalf of the city mayor, the city council, the city of Elko New Market and its residents, we would like to recognize you for your service to the community, and as you venture on your new endeavor, we extend our warmest wishes for success and fulfillment, and may your path ahead be filled with continued achievements, meaningful experiences, and endless opportunities to make a positive impact wherever you are.
Nice job, Tom. I wanted to just share a few things. About a week ago, when this, or maybe a little bit longer than a week ago, whenever the Savage Police Department announced that you'd be heading there, I put something on Facebook, and I want to read to you some of the responses from members of the community. First one, "He was the best. He'll be missed in our community." Next one, "Thank you for your incredible service to the community." Next, "Great loss for Elko New Market. He will be missed. We will miss him. He is surely a great police chief, and our kids love him. Good luck, Brady. We will miss you. Chief Jewell, you are a wonderful asset to our community and a great leader. Thank you for everything you've done while serving our community. Your leadership will be missed." Amen. Happy for him, but sad for us. No, Chief Brady is a great asset to this community. This is a huge loss for Elko. It is extremely important who we hire as chief, and he exceeds expectations. Good luck in Savage. And the last one I'll read, "Chief Jewell, you will be missed. You'll be so missed. So grateful for all you did for the community. Love getting to make your coffee all those years. Thanks for all your leadership and best wishes." I wanted to read this because this is directly from people in the community, people you've touched. I think it really speaks to your leadership, your community engagement. When we brought you on as police chief, I remember in the interviews, I remember thinking, this guy's just too happy. It's almost annoying to some respect. That said, your positive attitude is absolutely infectious. You've left an impact, or you've made your impact everywhere in this community, and as mayor, I can't thank you enough. Anyone else have anything?
Well, no, I mean, I, thank you. I mean, I can think of the times where I would shoot a text and you'd be sitting on the beach in Hawaii or something and actually respond. You know, the kids absolutely adore you, and I think, as both Tom and Joe said, you embody and model everything that I think we want, that most communities want in their officers, and, you know, your officers are a reflection of that, and I know it'll continue. So you're going to continue to change stuff up. We're going to stay connected. You're going to, you know, do some cool stuff in Savage and Scott County and everywhere else, but just appreciate the attitude, the creativeness, too. I mean, I think of, I don't know if it was during COVID or sometime, you know, I brought a whole bunch of my team down here that needed to get background checks or fingerprinting or stuff done, and we made it happen, and we got, we got my nurses on board, and we got people to do what they needed to do. So just, just, I don't know, you're always there. We appreciate you so much, and thank you for everything.
I'll get a plaque for you, Chief.
Awesome.
And is it okay if I take?
Thirty, forty minutes?
No. Why change now?
Yeah, right? I'm going to do my best to stick to the script. Mayor, council, and all those attending today, as we gather here for this, my final Elko New Market council meeting, I'm filled with both gratitude and a touch and nostalgia. When I first stumbled upon the job posting for this position, I must confess, I had to look up where exactly Elko New Market was situated. I was familiar with the Speedway, but one of those, I had no idea where it was. And what a discovery. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the city administrator, Tom Terry, and I'm sincere when I say this, your guidance and mentorship have been invaluable to me. You've illuminated the path to strike that delicate balance between the needs of the employees and those of our community members, showing me that they're very linked. Off-script for a moment, all your city is, is its city employees that serve it. If you do not take care of them, they can't take care of your community. So you can really show the quality of a community and its members by how well they treat the people that serve it, and this community treats everyone so well. And that goes to show with taking care of the police department, with building and investing in a new community police department, and then taking care of the employees. And it's not just pay, it's the attitude, it's the benefits, it's holding them to a high regard enough to sacrifice so much to make sure they're taken care of. It's greatly appreciated. To the mayor and the councils, those who were here during the hiring process, I extend my sincerest thanks. You've entrusted me with this role, and I'm deeply appreciative for the opportunity to serve along such other dedicated individuals. The Elko New Market City Council sets the standards of excellence that I've rarely seen matched. Your commitment to this community is unparalleled, and it's been an honor to work alongside you. I have worked for four municipalities, four councils, and at, as you can imagine, 23 years at Chaska, I saw a lot of councils and a lot of mayors, and I will put you against anyone. Your dedication to the community, whether I agree with all the decisions you make or not, your heart is to protect this community, and that's wonderful. Next, I want to acknowledge the incredible members of our city staff. Your warmth and support have been, made every day a joyous experience. The collaborative spirit that permeates our work environment truly makes us feel like a family. Together, we've tackled numerous projects, and the positive impact of our efforts resonates throughout the city. Thank you for your unwavering dedication. The police department isn't just one entity, it has to work with everyone, and the projects we've worked on, the code enforcement we worked on, even with the council, the ATV ordinance, that's a big deal, and a lot of communities don't get it right like we did, and just collaboratively was wonderful. Last but certainly not least, I want to express my deepest appreciation to the members of the police department. This was a ship that was going in the right direction, so my predecessor, I commend him and for all the hard work he did as well. Each one of the members brings a unique perspective, very unique with some of them, I'll say Unique perspective and unwavering commitment to our community, and a small department like ours, teamwork and flexibility are essential, and you have exemplified these qualities admirable. Oh, wait, none of them are here. They were here earlier, I promise. There was cake. I've worked alongside countless officers throughout my 29-year career, and I can say with confidence that the members of our department rank among the best. As I embark on this new journey, I want you all to know that you have profoundly impacted me, both personally and professionally. You've challenged me, Tom's challenged me a lot. Ah, my patience most of the time, no, just kidding. Inspired me, and ultimately, you've made me a better leader. For that, I am truly and deeply grateful. In closing, I want to say that I will miss each and every one of you dearly, though I may be leaving, the lessons I've learned and the memories we've shared will stay with me forever. Thank you for your support, your friendship, and your unwavering dedication to this community. It's greatly appreciated. So I felt the love, and I want to give the love back because this is a wonderful thing. I know my replacement has that severe dedication, unconditional respect for this community, and he'll keep this direction, this department moving in the right direction. So thank you guys for your time. Thank you, community members, I really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, well, let's open it up to public comment. Is anyone here to, you know the drill. All right.
Been here for a couple years now.
Yep.
Actually wrote, compiled my last two years of notes. Good evening, Chief. I'll miss you. I'll speak through Savage just for you.
Just for the record, so we get back on track.
Oh, I'm Jody, two, Jody Lucas, 26501 Xerxes Trail.
Thank you.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me or my whatever, my person, I was raised by a couple of college professors who taught me the meaning of working hard, keeping your word, talk to the person that you need answers from directly, and that actions in any situation will show a person's true character, and believe it when you see it. I feel that the city has lost its way with its lack of concern over people that live here, including our neighbors in New Market Township. We have residents that have lived there for decades, who are now being tortured by sounds and vibrating ground at all hours of the day. I personally was at a house near the site. These residents have families, young children, ages seven and five, that cannot go to bed at a decent time. No one can enjoy being outside because you can't hear each other, and the torturous part is, they don't know how long they can live there. Company foreman from Louisiana was threatening one of the residents for virtually asking questions. They now gated off a construction site, with no offense to you, more police presence at one site than I've ever seen in town in all my years. I mean, these are residents, they're not going to do anything, but the residents are assumed to be telling farces and being villains, and this outsider company is the victim. It makes no sense to me. I've sat here for a very, very long time, some nights missing other meetings, I'm involved in a lot of foundations, I've missed family gatherings, I've missed a lot of important basketball games, go Hawkeyes. I truly believe if I was not here to ask questions or listen, I wouldn't know. I'm now concerned that because I am here, a lot of business is talked about outside of these public meetings, which is unacceptable, and I can't tolerate it. Another resident near me stated that he reached out to inquire if he had interference and had to connect to city sewer and water. Would the city pay for it, since it's not what he wanted? He was told no. Again, creating undue stress to our residents. I also received an email from the DNR that Rich is now my point of contact if I have any well interference. At what point will the city reach out to us and tell us what's going to happen? How is it going to be remediated? And who is responsible for it? Which leads to another boiling point for me as a resident, that when we agreed to, or when it was decided to take an out-of-state company in to our water, they have no skin in the game, absolutely none, leaving the city completely open to liability, meaning us, the residents, because it'll be passed on to us, which seems to be a bad business practice for the city, but a fantastic deal for a water bottling plant. Also, giving that kind of benefit to one business but not another isn't good business practice for attempting to be a business-friendly city, or are we just friendly to industrial users? I absolutely love this city. I have spent countless hours in different committees, meeting people and creating events to bring this city to a community, which is important, but there is no room for any growth as a community unless there's huge improvement in communication, transparency, and care from the city to help create a better community. It is time for less talk and more action to show us that you truly care about the residents and the current businesses that are actually here servicing the city residents and the surrounding community. As always, I will be here listening and watching. I'm also here to say that if our city does not engage, we will just be a city that isn't a community, and mainly, just an exit to a water bottling plant. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to respond to a few of those things.
Okay. Can I, is this engagement, or are you just going to respond?
Whatever you'd like to do.
I like engagement, Joe, you know I like up here.
But some of this I'm not really looking for a response on.
Okay, shut up.
You spoke, so I'm going to speak, too.
Okay.
First, I'm going to start by saying that we are not going to rehash the Niagara thing, okay?
Oh, we accept that, we accept it.
Jody, I'm talking.
Okay.
So for months, maybe a year, we've been having public comment with folks talking about Niagara. Look, we're not going to agree on Niagara, and Niagara is moving forward. Right now, we're at the point where we're waiting on appropriations permit, and that's where it's at. We're not going to have another vote on it, we're not going to change our opinion. Niagara is moving forward if the appropriation permit goes through.
And we understand that.
I have more to say.
Okay.
So as far as having continuous public forums where we're continuing to talk about Niagara, let's just accept that you don't like it, that many community members don't like it, but it's still moving forward. I'm not going to try and placate anyone on this, we've done plenty of that. So as far as some of the other things, okay, the police presence, I personally am offended by the comment you made, okay? I had my tires slashed, I had death threats come my way, there has been a lot of stuff that hasn't been publicized about that. So yeah, there is a reason to have increased police presence. The next thing I'm going to say as far as outside business being conducted, please provide some evidence. If you have some proof that we're doing things behind the scenes, bring it forward, because that's never happened under my watch, it's never going to happen under my watch, so I'll be just as upset as you are.
Okay.
The last thing I'm going to say is regarding well mitigation. Well mitigation, site issues, I see Larry's here, and I know he's had some frustration with it, those are fair game. Those are, we can discuss those. If there's a way as a city that we can do a better job, we're going to do it. Jody, I've mentioned it before, I appreciate everything you've done for this community. I appreciate everything you're going to continue to do for this community, and it's not, it's not that I'm not, it's not that I don't want to be sensitive to some of the concerns here, I just don't want to keep having the same conversations if nothing's going to be changed. If there's things that we can address.
Absolutely.
Let's address them, let's tackle them.
Let's address the hours, because I was over at 2 and Pillsbury, and you can't hear anything, and those families deserve some solace and at least a little bit of enjoyment outside.
Right.
We're going into the summer, we're miles past Niagara coming, we know, but have some sensitivity to the residents around there.
And you're spot on.
You know, I mean, cut it off at six, let them have from six to, it's dark out, and you know, just have some decency with the people that we're dealing with, and with the police part, I'm just saying, they're at the gate. What are we going to do to the ground? I mean, it's raw dirt right now, we're not going to do anything, and I'm sorry you got all that, that's some crap. The original group of us, we're not that way. I'm going to come up here and stand and talk to you, Tom, anybody, but I'm not going to slash your tires, and I'm not going to say, hey, I'm going to kill you. That's horrendous, horrendous behavior, but I do want to build a community, and I do want our neighbors in New Market Township to have the ability to enjoy the outside and have some peace and tranquility, because that noise is devastating. It's, it could drive you insane how loud it was, and literally, the earth was moving. You felt the vibration, you know, so it's just, stuff like that, it cannot go into the evening, you're going to drive people absolutely batshit crazy, and that's why. And it's not going to be rehashing Niagara. You know, we don't like it, it is what it is, but we can do things to remediate the length until it's fully enclosed.
We're on the same page with that.
Yeah, okay.
Keep working on, yeah.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We got, welcome.
Hi. Hello, I'm Vita Konditz, I live at 9830 247th Street East in New Market Township. Lovely to see you all again. Recently, we had a meeting at the city at the library, and there were residents that came forward and shared some concerns about water quality related to the pump test that was done. I want to thank Renee for attending, and Gina was there, and it was open to the public, to anyone who wanted to come. But the reason, one of the things that was shared at the meeting, and you're probably well aware of, is a Minnesota State statue, 103G.287, about groundwater resources, and there is language in the statue that talks about the DNR's ability to, when they're issuing permits, to consider whether it's degrading water quality. So the specific concern that residents have, some of them, is that they saw changes in water quality related, they think, to the pump test, right, involving manganese, which is toxic. And so what I would like to relate to you is, I understand that the city is looking at a plan for how you might address that, but the statue tells me that it's the DNR that has the responsibility, before issuing a permit for increased water use, to consider if this permit may degrade the quality of the water for the residents. And I understand that there are other communities that are using more water, but I, and that this is equivalent to 1,500 homes, but I also understand that municipal use is the top priority, that the people have the right to have clean water at their tap. So my request tonight is that you look at that statue very carefully. We are in conversation with the DNR and the Department of Health, and asking residents to speak to them. I think there was some confusion about who was going to contact the Department of Health, whether the residents were supposed to, or the Department of Health was going to contact them. I've seen some emails go around. Hopefully, we're straightening that out so that they're involved, because it is a health issue. And I think Renee has pointed out rightly so, that it's difficult with water to know exactly what is causing, when you have a well, what is causing the issue, but we also know that there have been a number of residents, I counted at least 10 that spoke, maybe 15, I'm not positive of the exact number, who definitely had problems around the same time and after the pump test. And so I think it does deserve careful, careful consideration, and I understand you're anxious to get this park done and get them start building, but I would just please ask you to exercise caution, because it is your responsibility to make sure that people have clean water, right, in your city. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask you a quick question? What was that statue number again?
Sure.
Josh.
I can also share the slides with you that have it, but it's 103G.287, and it refers to groundwater appropriations, and there's subdivision two, and subdivision three, and five, that all talk not only about the water quality, but also considering future generations and regional groundwater use, which you know we've talked about here, right? It's not just about how much Elko Newmark is taking, or Newmarket is taking, but it's also about Lakeville and Savage and all the other communities that are growing and using more and more of the water. And the DNR also has the authority to regulate that, to look at a regional use. They haven't really done it. But to me, the water quality issue is much more immediate right now, that we want to make sure we don't have residents that can't drink their water, or that don't have to put in a $6,000 or more new system in order to have it usable. Thank you.
Thank you. So something that we had discussed a year ago, and we've continued to, I feel it's been a priority of the council, if we are moving forward with having a water bottling facility come into town, like it or not, that's not the point, but we want to make sure there's, we're doing everything within our power to mitigate some of these issues, well interference being a big one, okay? If there is some evidence that what we are doing as a city is negatively impacting is negatively impacting people in this community from a water quality standpoint, that's our responsibility to take a look at. So, I'm not gonna disagree with anything you said. I, in fact, I agree that's something we need to take a look at, and we need to take real seriously. So, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Larry, welcome.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to be brief and not get into what I would like to talk about, which is how we are being negatively impacted by this.
Would you mind stating your name and address?
Larry Schofield, one fifteen fifty Deuce Road, across from the Niagara project, so-called project. So, it's getting worse day by day. I'm gonna briefly just talk about that. It's getting very, very bad for us. Every day, it increases, the trucks that are going in and out, the traffic. Tonight, just before we came, they just pulled up a huge construction office. Instead of placing it so that it's not facing us, facing the gate and the road access, it's on that ten-foot hill that they've put up there now, facing directly at our home twenty-four seven. What kind of privacy is that? And they could've done it differently. You said that, anything that you could do differently to help us? Well, there's one thing right there, that's one minor thing. Anyway, I'll try to be, get to the point here that I came here tonight for. On your agenda, later on in the discussion, you're gonna talk about the permitted hours of operation for construction. I understand that developers wanna change those hours. We had an issue a few days ago where they were going past your six o'clock PM ordinance that you enacted. We called law enforcement, and they came out too late, because they left at eight o'clock. Now, if you're gonna be looking at changing those hours, I want you to remember, what was the purpose of creating the hours of operation in the first place? Just think about that. Obviously, it's to prevent negative impacts on neighbors like us in the early evening hours to enjoy their homes with their families without loud noise and busy truck traffic. I mean, they're banging, you guys don't know what it's like. They're coming in there, and they're dumping, and they're banging that tailgate against the box, and banging it again like three times. Backup alarms after that. There's three trucks at a, I should've taken more videos. There's three trucks at a time following each other bumper to bumper, in and out of there. So, if you're gonna be looking at this ordinance for the hours, before you do that, just remember, why was it created in the first place? Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristy Thompson, I live at two five eight three one Pillsbury Avenue, New Market Township. I guess I had wanted to ask, as far as those hours of operation, is that for the whole town of Elko Newmarket construction? Or is that just for neighbors adjacent to Niagara?
It'd be within the city.
The whole city.
Right, we can't do anything outside the city, obviously.
So, what's the purpose of that for?
Of having hours of?
Extended.
Uh, we're gonna be getting into the hours situation later in the meeting, but maybe I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm their daughter. I'm just here to say, don't allow it past six PM.
Understood.
Okay. Also, I think you guys know that there's people that live right adjacent to it, and they have very young kids. And just because it's summer, that doesn't mean they stay up till ten. So, the other thing is, I was curious, I was under the understanding that what was allowed to happen right now on that property was grading. Is that the only term used for what's allowed right now, is grading?
Rich, or Tom?
That would include grading, removal of existing buildings, tree removal.
Does it state that?
Soil control, soil correction.
Yeah.
Basically, how everything up to placing our structures on the site.
Like? So, like the pole they installed?
Yeah. Reasonable.
That's a temporary security measure, it's not a permanent piece of infrastructure.
That's not permanent?
They could do that at any time, there's no permit from the city that would or would not be required. That's outside of the specific permit. A resident could request that, or another business could request that. That's not something that's covered by me.
So, like, more that's for security reasons?
Yep.
You're saying, that's not, that's totally separate from the?
It's just for during construction.
Okay.
Monitor their site remotely and make sure that there's nothing going on that they don't want going on there.
So then, I have to say, what are the structures that got moved on there right now?
Temporary construction trailers. Yeah, yeah, they're temporary construction trailers that are typically set up on construction sites for,
In office for them.
In office where their plans are stored and.
Contracts from.
So, how many are there gonna be? Do you know how many are on there right now?
I don't.
Okay, you guys need to drive by, there's two now. I don't know what they are, I don't know how many more are coming, but it's pretty disgusting to look at all day, doesn't matter you don't live there. But for the grading, I just understood that it was just grading, and then there's a pole going up, and there's a camera on top. And my parents are like, what are they looking at? Are they looking at my parents all day? Who wants that? Fair enough. You'd all think the same thing too, if it was you guys. So, I guess also, I was just wondering, how does the offices moving on there, which doesn't seem to be grading-related or security-related? I mean, I, sorry, I just feel like they're walking all over you guys.
They're not, this is a normal activity when you have a large construction site, for them to move a construction.
For grading. Right now, it's just grading.
It is, but it is a construction site, and they do have people on site, and they have people that they need to accommodate on site, in office. It's a normal activity that's accessory to the grading that happens on most larger construction sites.
So, I've also been in town, where I just, I walked in a place, and someone was pretty upset that Niagara was just getting their way, and they got to just go ahead and proceed. So, people think because there's more than grading going on, there's gates going up, there's structures going in, they think that Niagara is just getting to do whatever they want. So, as far as the communication, I'm just saying, if it's understood that what's allowed right now is grading, it looks like there's a lot more going on.
Well, we've communicated in Facebook on, you know, publicly that this is what they're doing, and that they're allowed to do it, and it was actually approved several months ago. So, I'm not sure what you're asking for beyond that.
I guess people don't know that grading would ever include gates, you know, like installing, installing stuff, 'cause we're thinking it's pushing dirt. But there's gates being installed, there's offices going in, there's two now. I had no idea.
I found out it's a double wide, there's two pieces now. It looks like it's a double wide they're gonna put together. So, it's gonna be huge.
Yeah, okay. So, that's all I'm saying, is that I was just under the understanding it was grading, and I think people don't know what that entails, and it just, it doesn't look good.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that maybe we can expand a little bit more in our communication as to what exactly consists of a grading permit.
Yeah.
Fair, okay.
Yeah, no, alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who cares to speak under public comment? Please.
Jonathan Carlson, two six one two six Pillsbury Avenue. So, first, thanks Chief Jewell for your service, just a quick story about that. Couple years ago, I got a frantic call from my wife that someone was, had just robbed our mailbox and was running towards our house, and she had to go and call the police, and I was twenty minutes away. And it's at that time that you kinda realize how important the police department is. And so, gave me a piece to know that you or your officers would be responding, so I thought I'd share that.
Thanks for sharing.
And then, yep, and then I just had some questions though. So, you're gonna discuss later tonight on the hours of operation?
Correct.
But not vote, correct?
Correct.
Do we know if it's coming to vote, or when it's coming to vote, or how?
It would be the next meeting. I mean, it's not something that's gonna take.
Might actually be multiple, it might be weeks. Jonathan, it might be best to wait for that item. There's gonna be a full background and explanation for council on that when we discuss that.
Okay, and will that go through like the plant, there's a, when the silo issue came up, there's like a subcommittee that looked at that, and then it came here for a vote? Will this decision go through that subcommittee process?
We're gonna make the decision.
Right, the, when the, I don't wanna talk about Niagara, I just wanna talk, the process of a, there was a city ordinance about the height of a silo, and then there was a, a planning, yeah, sorry, a planning commission that looked at that first.
Depending on the direction from the council, there may need to be some language amendments that go through the planning commission, which would require a hearing, and that's what we'll be discussing.
Okay.
And it will depend on the direction given by council.
Okay, and that decision, the outcome of that or the process will be in the notes or published?
Yep, the council will provide direction tonight. If there's a process, it'll go through the process, but ultimately, everything has to come back, related to an ordinance change, ultimately has to come back to the council for approval.
Yeah.
You're asking really about timing, I think, right?
Yeah, just process and timing, 'cause we barely found out that this was on the agenda, and then like last minute are rushing here, and I don't want that to be the case if there's more process coming around this.
I don't want this to be stuck in bureaucracy, no offense to anybody in the room. I just, I want this to be moved along at a quick pace.
Yeah, and, yeah, we just, I just want to know the process and have notice, so like if we wanna participate, we can, yeah.
Good item, Jonathan.
Okay, great. And then, as you might guess, my feedback, I share the concerns. It's not an industrial site that's miles from where people live and sleep. It's very close, you've heard all that, you know, through this whole discussion, so just ask for consideration. It seemed like the silo height thing was very quickly dismissed as it was more of a fire concern, and it wasn't about the, you know, the concern for how that looks and for the people that have to live next to it. I don't know how this ordinance could be interpreted in any way, but it seems like it's there to protect people and families from that, and there's a lot in the area and a lot that care, so I hope that's given due consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak under public comment? Welcome.
Unless somebody else wants to. Moving slow.
Take your time.
So, just a couple of things. First, we had heard that there was gonna be a berm. Is that the correct word, berm?
I defer to our planner and engineer.
Is that the correct word, Rich?
Berm, like a mound of dirt to?
Yeah, to buffer, kinda noise, silence, the looks of, that type of thing. So, they've built up, I mean, we drove by there. We don't go by there often, we take Pillsbury now, but it's like twelve feet high of dirt, twelve to fifteen feet. And then they're putting these, this double wide on top of it. So, at first we thought, oh, good, here comes the berm, so our neighbors don't have to look at the site, and Stacy and Joe's two little kids will stay away from the site. And now we're finding out they're compiling the dirt all the way across. Did you know about that?
It's really the pad.
Is that what it's called, the pad?
Uh, the pad for the building, I imagine they're, they're grading out the pad. Which is hi, which is higher.
Yeah.
Towards the north end of the property.
Right. So, where's the berm?
That would typically come towards the end as part of the landscaping preparations, after they've got their parking lots and building pads and ponds graded. Those final landscaping-like features would go in. But I don't have their sequence of operations or what they plan to do. What we do is enforce that the grading plan is followed when they're done. So, they probably wouldn't build the berm first, maybe build the same on the large building.
Yeah. So then, my question is, is why do we use the driveway across from Schofield's and not do the horseshoe over by thirty-five W exit? Where there's like Paul's Autos over there, GNT, like Zuer's got GNT trucking over there. So, there's trucks, cars moving in and out of there all the time, there's no residents, so it really wouldn't bother anybody. But instead, now they made the driveway triple wide, so I don't know who changed their mind or how the thing got changed, but the, I even have original maps where it wasn't supposed to be the driveway, it was supposed to be by the exits of thirty-five W North and thirty-five W South. Why the change?
Renee, go ahead.
The driveway that is being used today is temporary.
Okay.
So, the drawings that you're referring to, that you have, that show the access further towards the interchange.
Yep.
That is where the new street will come into the subdivision.
Okay.
If, you know, if it gets approved by the city council.
Right.
And then the driveway that is there today is gonna get rerouted once that street is finished.
So, do you have like a time zone on how long? Is this gonna be all summer for them? Are we gonna put them up in a big hotel suite at the Radisson? Or what are we gonna do for Larry and Sherri? 'Cause these are our neighbors, and it's biblical to take care of your neighbors as you take care of yourself. So, I take this very seriously as a prayer minister with my husband that they're not, come out there. So, we don't take that road. So, we went out there the other day just to see it, and I was like, holy cow, your whole driveways, it's not funny. It was full of gravel, and they have a tar driveway that is always perfect, and it was full of gravel, and I went, is this going into your house? And she said, every day, every day we're cleaning. I go, who's paying for your cleaning crew? I would hire a cleaning crew, 'cause they're not of the age to be standing out there cleaning this. Seriously, if I was their age, and I just had back surgery, I'm moving pretty good. But they're older than me, and I feel horrendously terrible for them, like, as soon, I said, as soon as I heal from my back surgery, I will be over here with a broom and shovel helping you. 'Cause it's just something that maybe hindsight, you guys just wanna drive out and see. Larry's driveway goes straight in, and then there's this little like section for guest parking. You can actually park right in there, he'll let you. And John and I sat there for like half an hour going, holy cow, I wonder really if our city council knows what's happening. Well, then we used the QuickTrip, and we hear people in the QuickTrip talking about you guys, like, oh, Niagara owns the city council, and Niagara this, and Niagara that. And I thought, wow, is that, is that what's gonna roll through Elko? 'Cause I think Elko, when we moved here nine years ago, was really, had a good standing. The, I forgot the name of your restaurant, just give it to me, it's, um, Firehouse, 'cause as I say, it's police and fire, all honored it, and now everybody's questioning everybody, and it's like, do we really have to have this turmoil? I mean, it's just something, just, maybe you just need to drive out there, take the time, sit back and look at it and say, how can we improve this? So, the other thing is, we're the ones of the fifteen that Veda talked about who got manganese in our water. And Renee knows about it, but nobody, so I wrote to you, you know that. I wrote to Tom Terry, you know that. I, I don't know if I addressed everybody else, but we wrote to Ellen Considine at the DNR. She responded immediately and said, do not drink it, it's poisonous. And I said, our water in our toilet, not to sound gross, is black. So, Culligan came out and pulled all their equipment out and said, we can't service you. So, I'm like, what? What are we supposed to do? And he said, well, we're gonna, this was his big solution. We're gonna give you a check for eleven hundred dollars so you can go buy new whites, 'cause your whites are probably black. And I said, you must not know how I shop, because I shop Macy's, and eleven hundred dollars is barely gonna buy me socks and underwear. But you can take all your machines out. So, they did, they took all their machines out. The manganese during the testing got ten times worse. So, we called Connecticut Hofferman, which we have all their emails, all their water testings on our phones. I sent you copies. So, Ellen Considine said, send to Tom Terry, send to Rich Reverine, send to Tony Winke. Winke is, his response is always the same, I'm out of town, I'll be back next week. So, wait a week, thinking, yeah, it's vacation time. Wait a week, send another one, I'm out of town, I'll be back next week. And then the dates changed. We heard nothing, and I'm not trying to criticize you, Tom, you might get a million. And then the, the dates changed. Um, we heard nothing and I'm not trying to criticize you, Tom. You might get a million emails a day. I get a ton of psychiatric emails to go through every day. But when it's my water and it's affecting my family. So for two months, we sat with black water. So we showered at our daughter's house in Windrose, which upped her water bill. We did our laundry at the Laundromat. That was by the sex store. That was a lot of creepy fun. And then Mitch, our son, heard about it and he protested that, mom, you will never go up by that place again. Stay away from Motel Six. And, and our other son, Lakeville Cop, said, we're doing stings up there, stay away. So then I got chewed out by two police officer sons. That's not fun. So then I went to his house, washed our clothes at his house, had to buy all new whites. And finally Connecticut took over and said, we'll come out, we'll take a look at it. I've got a picture. We have eight tanks in our basement. Renee knows, she saw the tanks, Larry showed her the tanks. I have tank, I have pictures on my phone, I can send them to all of you. So six of them are for just to filter, one extras for the manganese and then there's one extra that is for our drinking water. I used to have a huge laundry room, like a woman's dream, and John had little section for his tools. Now that's out, John's tools are kicked out and it's all big tanks. And it's, it's not fun. And I know, Joe, you said you care, you care about our water, come out and see the mess that we have. It's, it's a mess. And now so far Connecticut's taking care of us. It costs over five hundred dollars to get it put in. I've got that bill on my phone. And now it costs us a hundred and sixty-five dollars a month to keep them running. That's not a filter change, that's extra. And this is well water. This should be kind of free water, but I think all well water still needs a filter system and still needs soft water, so you still, you pay something. But nothing to this magnitude. So now we've been referred to at the library meeting to a pro bono attorney, that's an environmental attorney, that's gonna start keeping track of all of us. And I don't wanna come back to this city and go, well, I'm suing you, cuz Josh, I know you hate when I say that. But this, this attorney at least is gonna represent us to try to fix the solution. And the minute the aquifer got tapped into for, and I don't understand aquifer myself, for whatever reason, the manganese starts showing up in different wells. Janelle, what's her last name, Kuznick? Yeah, Janelle. Hers, hers got it too, so I called her and I'm like, do you have black coming out of your, like your toilet? And she goes, oh yeah, don't wash your hair cuz you'll go from blonde to black. And I'm like, I don't know what to do. And it's greasy, oily. Um, it's not like charcoal where you could just chip it off. It's greasy, oily. So I tried bleach, Rust Rays, Iron Out and ble, excuse me, bleach tablets and nothing touched it, nothing. So John just took the whole toilet out and took it to the dump and threw it. Good, what do you do? If you can't get it out, if it's like oil, if, if you know about oil, you can't get it out, so. And we can send you all the bills and all the information and now we have to have our water tested every six months through Bloomington, pay for it ourselves to make sure it's not toxic, cuz if you get to the toxicity level, you're poisoning your body and you might not even know it. So, and I, this may be news to you guys. I, I don't, I was so mad when I sent it out and I was so beside myself and I'm bawling and crying and then I've got two PD officers saying, you can't be up in that area. Like, whoa, okay, I didn't know. I didn't know you're doing stings up here, but, you know, come out. Joe, you've been out to our house. But I don't know what to do about it. If you guys have solutions and if you really care, I think that's what's important. Chief Jewel, you left us with two main things that I wish we all had. And I can't even stand here and say that I have it all myself, but you left us with character and integrity. And I want all of us, and I know I'm probably the oldest one in the room, but all of us to think about that tonight. What is our character? And what is our legacy that we're gonna leave? Are we trying to build New York? Or are we trying to love and care for each other as family, as citizens, as Elko New Market should be? Like make this city different. And the only way to make this city different is right there. To act with integrity and character and have your legacy, be one that meets people's needs. That's, that's all I have to say. That's my grandma thing to say. Teach my grandkids that, so.
Well said.
Thank you, Jamie.
Um, a couple things, uh, you had mentioned the conversations happening in QuickTrip. Like, people are not gonna like us all the time. People are gonna feel that we're owned by someone. People, people are welcome to think what they want. I know what we're doing as a city council. I know what goes in my mind when we make a vote. People are gonna be welcome to feel however they want and if they wanna have a discussion, I'm happy to do it. Um, but I, I don't think any of us can let it bother us if there's chatter around town that not happy with us. We're just, we signed up to run for office or be appointed for office and that's just kinda part of, part of the deal, fortunately or unfortunately. As far as water quality, I do think we have a responsibility to make sure that the water qual, that our actions do not negatively impact the water quality. I'm gonna say something that I hate saying, but it's something we have to look into. It's not, I can't give you, I can't give you an answer or, or anything today and I hate not being able to do that, but but yeah, it's something we take seriously and something we'll be continuing to look at.
Yeah, I meant, I meant to mention, cuz I'm not gonna walk up there and give it. I meant to mention that Ellen Considine said before the DNR will approve, that Tom Terry and Rich Reverine have to, Rich is gone, yeah, have to come up with some type of water plan for the well users. Like if our wells go bad, are you gonna pipe out city water all the way out to Pillsbury? Cuz we're right around the corner.
No, you're, you're right. That's something we have to work through as part of it.
I'm not saying you have to do that. I'm just saying as an example.
Oh no, I know what you mean.
DNR, Ellen, Ellen Considine said there will be a water plant put in place before Niagara is allowed to start drawing off the aquifer.
Yep.
I said, I hope so, cuz our area got hit really, I don't know why, cuz the, the testing was done over by Zewir's.
Right.
But Zewir's wells, that they had to re-drill are super, they're two hundred and fifty-some feet deep. So that's probably why they didn't get affected. But to drill a well that deep is gonna cost thousands.
Sure.
You know.
I mean, more to come on all this and I'm, I'm sorry, that's all I have, that's all I can say right now.
No, I, I understand. I think even at the library, even Ellen said, you know, we, this is all new territory to everybody and as we go through it, we go through it together. And that's why I said, character and integrity and what, what's your legacy? When all this is done is everybody smiling. Cuz everybody's smiling at Chief Jewel as he exits. And, and I don't mind your, your first comment about if people are gonna talk, people are gonna this and that. But honestly, your train of thought as a younger person should be, when I leave this earth, or when I leave Elko, I hope everybody thinks I left with a good character and a good leg, legacy behind me and that I was kind and considerate and I made wise choices.
Well first, you referred to me-
I'm not saying that. I know I'm looking right at you and I shouldn't do that.
No, that's okay. You referred to me as a younger person. I appreciate that.
Yeah, hang on to that. It won't last long.
Your points are taken, so thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to speak under public comment tonight?
Could I trouble you to resend that email? I couldn't, I cannot have it.
I can, yes, and I, I, and I, and I have your card, but I'm sure you get a million like I get too and-
In actuality, I have three.
Three emails?
How do you keep up on that?
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm like, what? You only got three emails?
That's included also, but yeah, I mean, I, I went back, I looked at my junk mail, deleted emails and my inbox going back. And I have three emails on the water quality topic directly to me.
Okay, so I can do it directly to you if you want, cuz I think, actually, I think I got some of the, um, I had to pull back, you know, we haven't been here for over a year, so I had to pull up names and
So I wanted to make sure you had the money.
Yep, because-
If there's an offline conversation to be had, you guys can go ahead, but we're gonna keep moving.
Yeah, we got, we got your number.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna close public comments and move on to consent. Um, does anyone have any items on consent they would like polled?
I don't have any that I want to poll. I just got a couple of quick questions. I don't think I have to poll them. So with, uh, and I was joking with Beth earlier, but the RNF one, and I saw, as I was reading through the Planning Commission notes, they had made comments about, uh, townhomes versus all single family. The way I read it though, like we're still approving it where that one section can still be townhomes. I think there was a split in the Planning Commission, the way that I read the minutes, that some thought it should all be
Correct.
whatever. Uh, it was the recommendation that we're approving to allow for townhomes still.
Correct. It's what, it's the recommendation that came out of the city council.
Okay, cool. And then the second one, and if it can be briefly answered, the hazardous materials abatement at six forty-one, it seemed really high compared to what we had anticipated is-
It, it is. Basically, um, all of the plaster, pretty much in the entire structure, um, has a higher asbestos level than is acceptable for normal disposal. So that's why it's, it is much higher than we had expected. Although the other home that we were doing work on was much lower than we had expected, but it is higher.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo cuz it went from like twenty-one hundred to like thirty-one thousand or something.
Uh, twenty-one hundred is about what we spent, twenty-three hundred is what we spent on the other home, cuz that was actually very simple, very little work to be done. But on four sixty-one or six forty-one, um, the actual, they basically had to strip everything down to the studs, um, unfortunately, so.
That's all I got.
Any motions?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion by Kate, second by Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent passes. Uh, we have no public hearings tonight and we have three items under general business, so. Let's start with, well, go ahead, Tom.
So first item is the council's being asked to appoint interim chief of police. I don't know why. We are recommending to the council, or I am recommending to the council, that we appoint Sergeant Bell, um, as the interim chief of police. With, uh, Brady leaving us, um, the reason I'm making that recommendation is, uh, demonstrated capabilities of Sergeant Bell. He currently serves as the number two in the police department. He's in charge of all operational things when the chief is out of town or unavailable for any extended period of time. He already handles um, a portion of all the administrative load within the department in his role as the sergeant. Sergeant Bell also served as the interim chief when Steve Mortensen left as well. Um, and Sergeant Bell has been working and Brady's been working with him. I've been working with him professionally so that he would have an opportunity, if he so chose, to pursue a chief's position here or someplace else in the future. And he does have the qualifications for being a chief. He served as a senior officer before, which is basically the officer in charge before he was a sergeant. He has, um, been the field training officer for every single officer in the department, including Brady and Brady's predecessor. He has served as the only other command staff member besides the chief of police within the department. He also has his emergency manager certification, so for the emergency management director portion of the job, um, he is qualified. Uh, he's also been through the first line supervision and senior management courses through the BCA and he's also actually, the reason he wasn't here tonight for Brady was that he's currently at the FBI's LIDA course for supervisor leadership. So um, he, I believe he has it. The other thing is just the continuity of department culture and operations during a transitional period. Um, not only do we have Brady leaving, but we also have new officer coming on board, um, through that time period. And it would be my recommendation if, at the end of the interim period, which I'm recommending would be five months, if he's performing adequately, we would then, uh, consider appointing him as the chief permanently.
Why five months?
Um, I believe that's an adequate amount of time for him to, one, uh, learn the position, be in it, and for me to assess how well he's doing in that role. We can always shorten it up if he's doing really well. Um, that was a timeline I also discussed with Craig as a reasonable timeframe from his perspective as being a new chief. To also be able to vet it out and what he thought would be reasonable for me to assess him as well. Um, we would have the option during that timeframe, if he's doing really well, to shorten it. Uh, if we feel there's a need to, we could lengthen it. And if he's not being successful, we can look at other options. I really don't anticipate the latter would be the case.
No, and I, I, I would share that feeling. That just kinda makes me, why, I mean, why make it interim at all? Why not just make him the police chief? And hold, hold him accountable to the actions of a police chief?
Well, he would be held accountable. I mean, he-
No, but why make it interim when we're gonna hold him accountable anyway?
I guess my thought on that is, one, he has not been a regular chief in the past. Um, and so this allows us to make sure that, we want him to be successful. And this allows us to assess it and before we make that final decision, because once he's chief, if he's not succeeding, there's consequences to that. And I don't wanna put, um, a good sergeant and somebody that has worked for us for a long time. Um, I wanna put him in a position to be successful. And this allows us to assess it, see if he needs to be developed more professionally, if we need to extend that interim period. But once he's in the job, while we also wanna work to make him successful, there's no going back, so to speak. So, the other thing is that I would also not recommend filling the sergeant position during the interim
True.
period for that same reason.
Well, and, and if I may, then, and I see Chief wanted to talk to you. I mean, that's where I would lean towards shortening and/or getting rid of the interim position because I want the position filled and I don't wanna wait five months to fill the position uh, because we need it. That's why we have it currently. And I would be much more inclined to, to move faster to then backfill it post-backfill because we know that that's gonna take six months or gosh knows what, how long. So that, that would be my reason to say scrap the interim as well, because if we're gonna end up with the same outcome, which I think we all believe we are, then what is the point of the interim?
With, the, or, if I heard you correctly, Josh, you were talking that we should hire the sergeant position right away?
Post a position, whether we think that the sergeant position is the right one, if it's, if it's to keep the, the same consistency and, 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 you know, I think Chief, you've thought that that was a good position. That's why we did it with, with Craig. You know, it's up to the, the interim chief or the next chief to then decide for them, uh, what that position might be. And again, it gets me back to, we'll scrap the interim piece altogether, let them make the decision so we can have a full department again.
So with the sergeant position, Brady and I have talked about this extensively and I've also consulted with Craig on this. We all are in unanimous agreement that we should hold that position for a period of time. There's a number of reasons for it. One, when you're bringing in another sergeant, whether it's internal or not, you're adding chaos to an already transitory period. Two, there may be internal candidates who would be interested in that position and this interim period allows them to think about that and be able to step up and position themselves to be more successful for that, where right now, this is unexpected. The current assumption at this point is that Brady would be retiring under normal timelines, which was two to three, maybe a little more down the road. So this is kind of a little out of the blue. So somebody who might have otherwise thought, hey, when this happens and there's opportunities for positional change within the department, they really haven't had an opportunity to position themselves for it. So this would allow them to do it. For those internal candidates within the position, during the interim period, there's still a need for some sergeant duties, so there's an opportunity to provide some interim assignments to individuals as well and see how they perform, so they can assess whether it's what they want to do and we can also assess whether or not they're gonna be good at doing it. Because a good officer does not necessarily always translate into a good supervisor. Um, so there are things that, so the, the whole recommendation, where we're going with this, was a three-way discussion between Sergeant Bell, the chief and myself and reflects our consensus of what the, the recommendation we're providing you. And the whole intent is really to provide for the success of everybody involved.
But maybe, and I, maybe this was part of Josh's point, but aren't we basically leaving an open position? Sergeant or not, uh, just an open police officer position?
I'd be curious how much of the sergeant responsibilities versus coverage of, on the street, or whatever the right terms are of-
But, but even if we post it, we currently have a new officer who's in FTO and will be in FTO for some period of time. Um, and that is putting, and with the chief leaving, and with the transition, um, the addition of another person, it's not just this, it's the hiring process, it's the backgrounding of that which takes resources. And then when you hire the person, you're talking three months or so, up to three months, or maybe more of FTO on top of that, when you're already short. So we wouldn't recommend filling the position right now anyways, until that other person has been completed with FTO, is out on their own, we're operating on a normal schedule, and things have stabilized, just because of bandwidth within the department. We've put quite a bit of thought into this.
I would actually like to know Chief Jewell's thoughts, because, no offense, guys, but I trust the expert here.
Well, and, thank you, Gina. When you have a leadership change, you create instability in the organization. On top of it, we're just hired an officer. I don't wanna take a hundred percent of the credit, but I kinda drew out this plan for the success of the department. I, every officer we hire is probationary, and we do that for a huge reason. You, A, add some pressure on that person to succeed, otherwise they can be let go. It's vital for, I feel that Craig feels some pressure to succeed and know that when I came here, I, I left my job, I was on probation for a year, at any time. I wouldn't think of this interim as anything other than that, probation. If Craig isn't successful, doesn't meet your needs, he has a job as a sergeant. You can go and, and get a chief. If you make him the chief and he isn't successful, you have to terminate him in essence, because he's not gonna go back to being a sergeant. We felt this program was the best for the council, the best for the organization. Give five months to settle down under his new leadership, not try to place extra burden of hiring another officer or hiring a sergeant right away. Let the department settle down with the leadership change and move forward slowly, cautiously. There's no doubt in my mind, you're gonna appoint him the chief. It allows you to test drive the car before you buy it and make sure the fit is there. I know he's gonna be successful. I've actually, it hasn't come up, I'm gonna act as his mentor. As I had a mentor when I started here, we will meet monthly. I will get phone calls all the time. I'm sure most of those will start with, what were you thinking? You know, Chief, when you did this? But, um, so I am staying onboard to make him successful. Craig understands this and realizes that I, I love working here, and if I don't succeed, I don't wanna be fired or have to leave. I wanna then stay a sergeant. Interim, much like before, he was an interim chief, he went back to being an officer. That can still happen when he's interim, and if that makes sense. So, it was really something that I felt would lead to the success of the department, because if I didn't care, I would bolt and move to Key West or something. No, just season. But I, uh, I care about the success. I volunteered and really want to work. Um, Savage City Administrator and Leadership loves that, that I'm gonna be there for him as well. So, I'll, I know where you're coming from, but we don't wanna lose Craig either way, and we know he's gonna succeed, and he is honestly onboard with everything. He, he understands there's, when you take a new role, there's a probationary period.
He does not view the interim period as any lack of show of confidence or an insult to his capabilities or anything else. I specifically had that conversation with him, and he's like, no, that makes sense. The period that we talked up was a conversation between the two of us about what would be reasonable. But again, if he's doing really well, it doesn't have to be an entire five months. But that's a reasonable starting point. Would, at the end of the day, at least, that's what we're recommending.
Any other thoughts?
I appreciate the conversation.
Anyone objecting to this? So do you need a motion from us?
Yes, I would be looking for a motion to appoint, uh, per the motion and the staff recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item B.
So, uh, a few months back, um, Councilmember Berg talked about, hey, should we start having the hard conversa-, you know, the, the firm conversation about what are the plans for the old PD building? There's been a lot of informal conversation and intent of preserving that asset for future reuse. But we've never really had the formal discussion about what's the reuse, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna fund it, all of those details. And the council said, yep, we should have that conversation, and said, um, we probably should put together a group to do all the legwork and just make a rec-, make recommendations to us on that topic. So the council, um, approved a composition for a old PD building study advisory group, um, to be appointed, which would be made up of representatives from the Park Commission, because it's a facility that'll get rented out, the Planning Commission, because it's a land use, uh, City Council, um, because, hey, you guys make the final decisions and to help provide continuity of conversation back to the full council. Representatives of the organizations who already have leases for use of portions of the site, and also community at large. Um, we had identified individuals who are named in the memo to represent, uh, the fixed groups. We have, uh, appointees or recommendations to the council from the planning, from both commissions. Uh, we have representatives who have volunteered from both the, um, ball team and the food shelf. Uh, really, at this point, we need the council to appoint the members, identify the members at large and the council representatives, and then just make a motion to make those appointments. Um, with the members at large, the council identified one to three. Uh, we promoted it on Facebook. We had three individuals contact us. Um, we asked them to provide some additional information about who they are, you know, additional, um, information about themselves and their interest, which we provided to council. Um, so at this point, we'd be looking for the council to identify the at-large member, members, the council representatives, and then just make a motion, appointing.
I think if we got three members of the community, then I'm good with three.
Same.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Who, uh, any, who in the council wants to be part of this?
I mean, I'm willing to volunteer unless someone else wants it more.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Can you have one to two, or is it just one?
You guys had indicated one to two.
I think one's okay.
It can be your backup, in case we can't make it.
I like it. Okay, so you have the people you need?
Yep, so I would need a motion to appoint the representatives to the advisory, old PD study advisory group, uh, with Gina as the council representative, Amanda as her backup, um, Jim from Hope for the Community, Cory from Alco Express, um-
Melissa from Planning.
Melissa, Paul from Parks, and then the three individuals who had expressed interest from the public.
Someone-
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Okay. Water system studies proposed.
Yep, so, uh, we'd given a heads-up quite a while to the council that we'd be coming back, um, looking for authorization to, uh, take a look at capital improvements in the water system. There's three studies or proposals that are put out for the council. The first one is an update to the water system study that we completed a couple of years ago to reflect, uh, new information that we have. At that time, a lot of the analysis related to system, system capacity, et cetera, was based on design capacity, because we weren't at capacity, and we hadn't run, quite honestly, the full system, for instance, the water treatment facility, at full capacity. Um, also, there's a lot of other inputs to that, population projections, et cetera, that would weigh into the analysis of the overall system, projected future demands, et cetera. And so now that we have more information, such as updated population projections, we have, um, practical data from the O�re test, running the system at full boogie, that's a technical term, and a, additional information, et cetera. We need to update that. The other part of it is, we do need to drill a new well for firm capacity. We've talked with the council, that's a thing that exists today. And we'll need to put a new water tower. Those are improvements that we need to make regardless. Um, the potential for a large water on this system does potentially accelerate those improvements from when we normally would, but we're gonna have to do them regardless. And so this study would go up, update it, revise when we need to do it, the approach we're gonna take to it. And then, once we have answers out of that overall study, this would also authorize, um, if appropriate, the beginning of work on the design of the well and the water tower itself. These are inevitable improvements, we need to do it. The thing to keep in mind is, this was kinda structured as a nested study. We need to get the answers out of the first study to guide the next studies, and the council will be delegating the authority to staff to, um, basically let Rich know if and when he should move on to those next studies. The reality is, once we complete the first study, we'll be coming back to you guys with a report anyway, saying here's where we need to go.
I would just add, the reason we're bringing all three is that these can have long lead times of work and take a year to design site and, and construct water tower could take two years. So, you don't wanna wait until you think you need it, you need to plan ahead for getting things ready. Even if you don't let a contract until you know you need it for sure, the planning part is gonna be useful at the same time.
We're talking about three different stages of planning, right?
They're basically-
Two.
Three studies, but two are related and kind of dependent on the first one. The first one says, okay, yep, you're gonna need a new water tower, and based on this data, this is when we think you need it. It might be three years out, it might be one year out, so that's what this first study, and the same for the well. But rather than come back to you for something we know we're gonna have to do, we're asking for approval, subject to staff saying, okay, yep, we're convinced this is good, go ahead.
So I gotta ask the question, if it's something that you know we're gonna do, why not come back and get it anyway?
Just don't spend any money till we need to.
For instance, if the study shows, we don't hypothetically, we don't need to do the water tower for five years, we don't need to start spending money on it, on that study today. We could wait a couple of years before we do it.
But why, why does it really benefit anyone by authorizing it today, when we'll, we can just authorize it when needed?
We could, it was just a-
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
No, there might be some obvi-, it might be obvious that we need to start, for instance, start working on the well, um, so we could just start moving forward with that.
I mean, it's, I hate redundancy and bureaucracy, but at the same time, I mean, I'd almost feel better if we authorized things as it's needed, rather than ahead of time.
The council could simply just authorize the first study. We still, we're still gonna come back to the council and say, here's what the study says, and here's what we need to do.
Yeah, I like that idea.
It was an attempt at efficiency.
Nope, and I appreciate the attempt at efficiency whenever possible.
No, and I do too, and I was just writing down the total cost. I mean, so total cost for all three together is just shy of three hundred thousand. The first little one is only twenty-eight-five, so, I mean, that's the, the preliminary system study one. I'd be curious, you know, between, and I don't know how long it would take, but there's gotta be grants, there's gotta be funding available that we could tap into to potentially get support, assistance, state, somebody to, to help pay for some of this cost, and that's where I'd love to then take it to the Capitol next year. And how long does the study take?
So the preliminary one would be adequate for some military, you know, for, you know, state laws or whatever. And that's certainly an option, and we plan to prepare it with that in mind. How long it'll take, I would think it'll go very quickly.
Okay, but still, I mean, that gives us time, too, if we wanna look at the twenty-five session, to go ask for state funding if it's legislatively needed to be approved or something.
It, it would, we'd have it in plenty of time, and given that they didn't pass a bonding bill, and the governor said no special session, there would possibly be an opportunity. And usually, the workup for that upcoming session is usually midsummer, early fall, when that stuff has to be clearly identified for upcoming session. We should have that completed by then, Rich, so.
Trying to find the right wording to disauthorize what we wanna authorize.
Um, council could simply authorize, um, the water system study update, and just don't do the other two at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, into reports.
Um, first item under administration is the item for which our esteemed audience, most of them have stayed for, which is the discussion on the hours of operation. Um, Renee, do you want me to provide the overview? Do you wanna do it?
I can do it if you want.
Okay.
Okay, included in your, um, packet was a memorandum outlining that the city code, uh, section five dash five contains the city's noise ordinance regulations. The noise standards contained in, uh, section five dash five dash two of the city code, I'm gonna read it out loud, uh, for everybody's benefit, state that construction activities, no person shall engage in or permit construction activities involving the use of any kind of electric, diesel, gas-powered machine, or other power equipment, except between the hours of seven AM and ten o'clock PM on any weekday, and between the hours of nine AM and nine PM on any weekend or holiday. This is the section of the city code that staff has always referred to, um, regarding noise and enforcement of our noise ordinance. Uh, all developments that have been constructed, uh, during our time with the city, such as Boulder Heights, Pete's Hill, Ridgefield Estates, um, con-, uh, the preserve, the contractors have always been advised of this section of the code and permitted hours of operation pursuant to section five dash five dash two. Recently, uh, last week, as, uh, you may be aware, we, um, realized that there is a conflict in the code. Can, uh, there's another section of the code, which is under the zoning ordinance and sec-, uh, title eleven dash eleven dash eight that addresses specifically grading operations and, uh, uh, subject to grading permits issued through the city. And it states, "Earthwork and hauling operations shall be performed between the hours of seven AM and six PM, Monday through Saturday." Um, such activities are also prohibited in the following holidays, New Year's, Memorial, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. Um, when we realized, uh, the police department actually alerted us to the apparent conflict in the city code, um, we quickly advised Niagara that grading operations needed to comply with the most conservative, the seven AM to six PM. Until this can be, uh, rectified, they will be, uh, operating under the seven AM to six PM. So, um, staff's recommendation is that the, all the noise ordinances be contained in just one section of the city code, so there's not any future discrepancies or conflicts that could happen in the future. The, uh, the earlier section, noise control, under title five dash five dash two, is really modeled after state statute. The Minnesota Rules, chapter seventy dash thirty, contain noise regulations, and they are broken down into two timeframes, um, daytime and nighttime. And the daytime hours listed in Minnesota Rules, which is enforced through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, is seven AM to ten PM are, are considered daytime hours, and ten PM to seven AM are considered nighttime hours. Um, if, I did include the research of several other cities, um, and you can see from the research that many of them, uh, do have that seven AM to ten PM for, uh, noise ordinances. Some are different. But the reason for that noise ordinance, we believe that the hours, ten AM, or seven AM to ten PM, is simply because that is how it's stated in Minnesota Rules. Um, so we are looking for direction from the council on how to reconcile, uh, this. It is our recommendation that the hours be just removed altogether from title eleven dash eleven of the city code and contained only in title five dash five. And if there are any changes that the council would wish to see in title five dash five, um, we would take those. Amending that title eleven will require a public hearing before the city's planning commission. Um, so we have to schedule a public hearing. There's definitely some time involved with, uh, no, notices to the newspaper, um, ho- holding the planning commission, uh, commission meeting, providing a recommendation. But that change in that title, uh, staff's recom-, recommendation would just be to remove it there. Then any, uh, ti-, any changes to title five are strictly under the purview of the city council. Steph, go ahead.
Sorry, until there are changes-
Mm-hmm.
-out at the Niagara site, they will be operating from seven to six.
And not just Niagara, any grading.
Well, yeah, anything going on, any grading.
Grading permit.
Yeah, and, and not- And, and not at all on Sundays, and not at all on holidays, cuz that's the most restrictive piece of both sections of ordinance. And just to clarify what the conflict is, section eleven eleven eight is only referring to earthwork and hauling or grading, and only for grading permits. So if somebody doesn't have specifically a grading permit, and just has their final plat approval, arguably, it wouldn't apply, and you'd still be under seven, ten. So you have these different intents within the ordinance. Also, to point out, is five dash five dash two applies to all construction activities and isn't limited. So if there are people working inside the building, hammers and nails, that type of stuff, you know, building a building, that would still be seven to ten, and the six to, or the seven till six o'clock PM would not apply to that type of activity. So there's a lot of potentially different inconsistencies, depending on whether or not you consider it to be the all same thing, or you're gonna have different sets of hours for different sets of construction activity. And the reality is, there's this separate piece that was buried over here, that was legacy language from the former city of Elko, plus what we've been applying in practice for a couple decades. And we need to rectify it, and the council needs to just provide direction on, what are we gonna do for all construction activities going forward? And do you carve out a separate criteria for grading activities compared to other construction activities?
I like the idea of simplifying it and keeping it as one. I do, personally, I don't think we should move, or remove the eleven dash eleven dash eight. I would like to see that ordinance actually be expanded to the five dash five, and make changes on that ordinance. So, I would like to see something like Monday through Friday, seven to six, no holidays, maybe not Sundays at all, preferably, and then nine to six Saturday.
What we would suggest, understanding your intent, Gina, we would still suggest deleting it from eleven eleven eight, but if you want that language to remain, you just move it over to five dash five dash two.
Why delete it? Why can't we just leave it?
Cuz it would be redundant, and when you're doing code updates, there's always the potential, as happened here, that you have duplication or overlap between ordinances that could conflict with each other. And it's better just to have it in a single spot.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Cuz I think, I'm thinking what you're thinking. When, when we're saying, get rid of eleven dash eleven dash eight, is it just subpart D? We're getting rid of that language, we're keeping A, B, C, E.
Correct.
All of that other stuff will still exist, all of those other environmental protections are not going away. But it's just the timeframe hours that we can still restrict differently in five dash five dash two, which I think is what you're talking about, that I tend to agree with. But we'll get rid of the having two sets of time periods.
Well, I don't want two sets, I like this time period.
Right. But I think, but, so don't worry that A, B, C, and all the other ones that are listed, A, B, C, E, and F are still going to exist. Those are not going away, so all those other environmental protections.
You wouldn't have to have it in two places, you could just move it over into the more appropriate place, if that's what you wanted to do.
Essentially, changing these construction and grading hours is, I think, what you're getting at?
I think the principle is, and I agree with the, I would want grading to stop by six.
Yeah, I like, I like how it's stated here, seven to six PM, Monday through Saturday, I'm okay with that. And I think we should actually take those hours for the five dash five ordinance.
I mean, specific to Niagara, just given the proximity to the neighbors, it's, I probably care more about grading stopping at six with this one than I would another site. This is a very unique site. I don't know if that's something we need to carve out, or we just.
I kind of feel differently, because like the reconstruction of downtown New Market right now is, it's loud. It's a disaster. They're there till nine o'clock at night with a gigantic excavator digging stuff up, making noise, disrupting people that are just as close. So it's like,
Fair point.
It's like, if you're gonna make it one construction site, you have to look at it as a whole, not just as.
I'm good with that, I didn't mean to imply otherwise.
Changes just for one project, cuz I feel like it's going. Yeah.
Work it extra four or five hours a day, the job gets done that much faster, so it's a trade off.
You could literally add three months to the project, or whatever.
That's okay.
But we have to have a balance between happy neighbors that have a quality of life versus them extending it a couple more months.
And children, don't forget the children.
Guys, we got this, okay?
I'm just saying, the children are big time.
Is everyone, anyone opposed to stopping this at six? Okay, so we're all on the same page with that.
So we're talking seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday?
So.
Monday through Friday?
I thought it was Monday through Saturday.
What, what I heard, maybe for simplicity's sake, is taking the language in eleven eleven eight, related to hours of operation, slide it over to five dash five dash two, and still leave it specific to grading activities, and then the other hours related to other construction activities would still apply.
I still think ten is too late for at least outdoor construction.
And, well, and if, and if that's the case, other cities do have shorter hours. Like, in my experience, nobody goes till ten o'clock, right? It's dark by then, it's rare unless it's a building that actually is fully enclosed, and the plumbers are working really late. So I think it, and there are other cities that have shorter hours, some, there, if you look at the other cities that we contacted, one has nine o'clock, a couple of them have seven, although by and large, nearly every other city in the area, and every other city in my experience typically goes to ten, even though nobody actually goes to ten.
Let's do it.
No, you go ahead.
Is there a way that under five dash five dash two, that we have, these are restrictions for any outdoor activities you are to be done by six o'clock? Therefore, if you're inside the building, putting up sheet rock, you can be there till ten? Is there a way you can do it inside and outside restrictions?
You, you could, but that's not how most ordinances are written. I would, and that's not what most contractors are used to in other communities, and a lot of times, so, large sites like Niagara, where they have a site supervisor, they're much better managed. Most other construction, mostly residential, there isn't a site supervisor, there's just subs that are showing up, and compliance is much more problematic. The other thing, I did talk to other, I did talk to another city administrator who's on our list, is having a seven o'clock downtime, and I asked him, and I said, so have you had a lot of complaints from contractors or whatnot? He said, "The contractors haven't pushed back as hard, but they have more non-compliance." Because the subs who come in, in every other city they work in, is later. So I think there's a balance of, you can have the quote all you want, but you might have a lot more non-compliance the earlier you go in, the earlier you go. I think it's just what the council feels is reasonable for activity. And there is, in staff's assessment, a difference between other construction activities and earthwork. Earthwork, as we've heard tonight, has a different level of impact than other construction activities. And when people are, and we've had it happen on projects over the years, where guys are out, you know, the riffers are there at six o'clock in the morning, the police department gets a call, and they go out and tell them, you guys gotta shut it down until seven. But it's not nearly as impactful as the scraper running, you know, two hundred yards away.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Sorry. One piece of information that was not included in this table is the regulations that are currently in place by Scott County, which currently apply to all the town championships in Scott County. They don't have any hours stated in their code, because they default to state statute. So, that is what the county would enforce if some development was going in in the county.
If I could note too, I mean, one option, and you may not want this option. Some cities have included, unless, these are your hours, unless you receive written approval from the city or consent to other hours. And that might apply in certain scenarios where you know that there will be less impact on surrounding communities, or for a project that needs to be done quickly.
So what needs to go back to the planning commission for a change to be made?
What, so, under any, under any circumstance, we're just suggesting remove hours from the grading permit, it's just the wrong spot for it. The planning commission, then, we then need to know what directions you wanna make to five dash five dash two. That can be done strictly by the council. If you guys agree that we're just taking it out of eleven eleven eight, that has to go to the planning commission regardless.
And my understanding was, if it got more restrictive, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from conversations, I thought if it got more restrictive, we, bypass is not the right word, but we don't have to go through the, the public hearing process. You know, if we were to widen it and get it more, less restrictive, we would have to go through the public hearing process, but if we're getting more restrictive.
Any change to the ordinance requires.
Change to title eleven.
I still don't understand why we would need to remove section D from title eleven, if we're gonna keep those hours.
Ultimately, that's for the planning commission to tackle, right? And make a recommendation back to us.
Yep, but what the hours ultimately, you guys are approving it at the end of the day, and the section where the hours are actually gonna be, is in the section that they don't touch. So, if you guys are okay with just deleting it from there and doing whatever we're gonna do in five dash five dash two, that's simple, we can start moving that. But it would be useful, when we get to that meeting and that hearing, to explain to them what the intent is at the end of the day, even if it's not directly related to their piece of the process.
Can we still change five dash five dash two without removing the eleven dash eleven dash eight D section? And can we not just leave that as is? I'm, I'm just concerned, because that section is specifically related to environmental protections, is that right?
It, it is, and it's for the grading, but hours of operation is not the right location for it. Hours of, hours of operation should not be there, they should be in five dash five dash two.
Okay, let's, as a council, and council only, let's figure out what it is that we want, and then let's go back to staff and tell them to make it happen. So, we're all on the same page, the grading activity has to stop at six, right?
I just don't understand the difference with the construction and the grading. Like, I'm thinking of these two separate projects, because it's like similar work with giant machines and dump trucks and stuff. Like, what is the difference?
So the, should I answer?
Well.
My thing is that I think six o'clock is too early. I think it's gonna drag projects on.
Okay.
It's, like, the longer things go on, the more disruptive it is. I have young kids, my sister lives in downtown, the reconstruction, she has an excavator, like, sitting in her driveway. She has young kids, like.
So you want, you want it open to get the project done sooner?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's a little, I mean, do I want them working till ten o'clock at night? Absolutely not. I think six o'clock's too early, ten o'clock's too late. I would like to meet in the middle. That's kinda where I'm at, but I just, I don't understand the difference between, cuz the same sort of equipment is at these two sites. So what?
All right, go ahead.
Earthwork is like dirt, right?
There isn't, for, for that activity. So when you're talking about digging, ripping up the street, anytime you're moving dirt, or moving material, or hauling material, that's the same as what they're doing out there. The six o'clock shutdown time does not apply to that for two reasons. One, they don't need a grading permit, because they're operating on a city project, and it's already been authorized by the council. And two, five dash five dash two specifically provides exemptions for city projects, because it might not just be that city street. The council talked about this when we did the roundabout, the council wanted it done as soon as possible, and provided the greatest amount of flexibility, because of the public safety aspects of that project. And that's common language that you'll see. Also, because if you have public works, and they gotta come in at ten o'clock in the, you know, two in the morning, to fix something under the street they gotta dig. So there's an exception generally for public projects, and it's not uncommon to see that in other ordinances. But the main difference, taking that out, the main difference is, that's not a grading permit. Although the activity is the same, that's part of the conflict that staff was pointing out, is that if you're grading, you're grading, if you're excavating, you're excavating, if you're hauling, you're hauling, there really shouldn't be.
It's all loud, it's all disruptive.
It's all disruptive, so whatever is appropriate here should be, it should be applied equally, whether it's six o'clock, ten o'clock, eight o'clock, whatever it is.
What was the initial intent, intent of having this under the eleven dash eleven dash eight, and at these times?
I don't know, that is language that survived from the former city of Elko ordinance, which I was not familiar with.
So basically, under five dash five dash two, the construction activities would be considered construction, earth hauling, everything, right? So you could say, "Construction activities, grading, earth hauling," you could put it all in there so that, right?
Or you could create a separate exemption just for the grading or earth hauling. You can say, "All construction activities, except these," which would be the stuff out of eleven dash eleven dash eight, the grading part, "except these guys have these different hours from all the other construction activities."
Well, if we do that, I'm not in favor of keeping construction activities till ten o'clock either. So then we're changing two things. So, you're gonna put in the new from eleven eleven eight, you're gonna stick that in there for earth moving, and then you're gonna have construction activities, and I would like to see that brought, bring, brought, sorry, down to even seven o'clock at the very latest, is the latest I'm willing to go on that.
Me too.
And there are a couple cities that are at seven o'clock, and there are cities that see a lot of construction.
What does everyone else think?
So, kind of along that line too, there are a lot of other cities that do seven o'clock, Savage, Wayzetta, Edina, Eden Prairie, Lake Elmo, and pulling some of theirs, and they have some really good language in these. I did so much research on city ordinances this last legislative session, like, I can navigate ordinances quickly.
What do you wanna see, Josh?
I would love the, the seven to seven, and, and allow for variances. And, and there's language in several of these that allow for more administrative-type variances up to, you know, three days, or five days, or something. So they're limited for those extenuating circumstances, where it rains for a week and a half, and then, you know, now we got things delayed, or supply chain issues, or whatever. So I think, shortening the timeframe, allow for those variances in a very limited way, so that we're not, you know, disrupting projects and things like that, and we can still be reasonable.
That sounds similar to what Kate said, you guys are kinda on the same page. Amanda?
I'm good with that.
You're good with that? Gina?
Okay, so we're, we're technically, then I just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly. We're gonna change the earthwork and hauling operations to allow for up until seven o'clock, rather than six o'clock?
Yeah, but, but scaling back the construction piece from ten o'clock to seven.
I don't wanna, I mean, personally, I don't want, I don't think we should expand the hours that earthwork and hauling is allowed to seven. I think we should keep that six, and then I, I think all other construction might be okay until seven, at its latest, I would say. But I don't know why we wouldn't make.
It's the same thing.
It's not necessarily the same thing, though, I mean, moving soil and earthwork, it can be more disruptive. I, I just.
Have you gone over there?
I've not gone over there, but if this is already six o'clock, I don't see why we would allow another hour.
I mean, I guess where we're at, I mean, we have three people ready to support seven.
I mean, I'm, I'm cool with keeping eleven eleven eight exactly as it's written till six, and then just the construction activities ones comes down to seven.
I'm, I'm okay with that too, I just don't know if that's gonna be a pain in the butt.
I feel like administratively, having it in two places will cause headaches, like how we got here, where we are, where it's.
But they would be right underneath each other in the same five dash two.
Yeah, I mean, regardless of what the council direction is, we would say, pull hours of operation, it really shouldn't be there. It should be over in five dash five dash two, whatever it is.
So we're really talking about an hour, right? We're talking about, is it, do we stop it at six, or do we stop it at seven?
So can we clarify then, the, the earthwork, cuz what I heard from this conversation was, is the earthwork, the, the grading only applies, those hours restriction only apply if you have a grading permit. The same exact work with the same exact machines could be done, but could be done up until seven o'clock if it didn't have a grading permit tied to it. So then, that's where it gets to, we're defeating the point of having two separate times, because I would just avoid pulling a grading permit then, and I would just.
No, no.
I mean, not, not, not avoid it, but, you know, in the future, when I have to do the final plat and, and finish up stuff, I could be doing the exact same thing. Then that time should be six, so how do we, how do we rectify that difference?
If you pull it out of eleven eleven dash eight, the same hours related to earthwork, it would apply to all earthwork, so it would be the same. You're just saying, you're just saying hauling and earthwork stops at six, all other construction activity at seven, or you say it's all seven, or it's all six, or whatever other.
In fairness, having different ones, it's gonna be difficult to enforce for, it's the police department at six o'clock or seven o'clock that's gonna be getting the call. Okay, they're digging a trench to lay a sewer line, is that grading, or is that? You know, once they start building.
Is it a grading permit, if you don't have access to all that?
And then that's where I would default back, uh, uh, one time, and if, if it's six o'clock, then it's six o'clock. If it's seven o'clock, it's seven o'clock, but we pick one time, cuz I think it just makes it ever, just administratively, enforceably easier. You know, I just, I don't know how six o'clock impacts projects and things like that. Seven o'clock seemed the most reasonable.
I went and looked at that job just before their meeting started and they were still working. And I was glad to see it because I want those results.
We want, right. It's in the, yeah.
I guess the residents there also want that work done, so they gave.
Does any other city have it separated like that, like a separate for earthwork and dirt work? Or is it just unique to us?
That the whole thing with the earthwork is kinda, is unique to us. And, and even at the time, it was in Elko ordinance was unique to Elko. It's, 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 um, it's more of an anomaly than the normal. Usually it's once at a time for everything. It's just what should the time be?
Okay, I know some cities have nothing allowed on Sunday. Am I jumping the gun or do we discuss that yet? I know holidays.
Narrow down our time first before we start.
Okay.
It occurs to me that, like, there's a difference in who these are impacting. Right now with eleven, eleven, you'd be shutting down a contractor that's working in a, in a field. He's not putting anybody out of their homes. He's making noise that bothers your neighbors, so shutting them down is different than shutting down where you're trying to get a street built back together because people can't get into their garages until it's done. There's a different, perhaps, interest in allowing some longer hours in those cases.
Well, we, we, we do have that. There's an exception for that because if you have somebody working downtown and the water means the water shut down, they can't stop at six when half, when you got an entire block out of water.
The exception's included, but I don't wanna have to come and get a permit every week to allow them to work later when we need it done, so.
It's an automatic exception, Rich.
Yep, it's in, in the ordinance right now, so.
Public projects are exempted, but private developments are subject to the rules.
And I, and I like the one, and I can share this with whoever wants it, uh, but like, Lake Elmo, I like where they, they have a specific subpart where it talks about, uh, if it's not, if the construction activity is not happening no less than twelve hundred feet from any direction from any dwelling, it can, maybe that's another automatic exception or something. So if it is truly, you know, whatever that would be, a fifth of a mile, and maybe that's not, maybe that's not far enough that it would make a difference. So, I mean, maybe, but it's something to consider. I mean, maybe if it's a, you know, a mile away or something and not that we would have a lot of that in a small town like this, but.
Short-term administrative permits might be something for those extenuating circumstances, but my opinion, or Amy have a different one, is I would say you just have a set of hours. And it goes back to what the chief was talking about. You have, you know, Officer Jones and it's eight o'clock. Is it this or is it that? And they don't know whether, they won't know or have access to whether or not there was a special exemption permit provided.
And Larry, you've confirmed, right? So maybe that's a stupid thing that Lake Elmo does on the record now. So, but just, you know, other ways that we could get, just for those extenuating circumstances, you know, those variances, for temporary too. I don't want it to be, uh, for the entire project, they're exempt because of whatever, maybe except for those public things that make sense, but.
If the council wants us to include something like that, we, we can. That wouldn't be unreasonable and might provide for those extenuating circumstances.
I wanna go back to the role of the planning commission though in this. Because are we supposed to basically draft what we want and tell the planning commission to approve it? Or do we send it to the planning commission to come up with what we want and propose back to us?
Well, part of the process would depend on the guidance. From what we're hearing from guidance, there seems to be a major, a majority, if not consensus, that we're just gonna remove the hours from that section of the ordinance. Technically, we can move forward with that process on whatever timeline it's gonna take because we can only do it so fast. We can come back and amend the ordinance in five dash, five dash two as soon as we can publish, legally publish it or put it on our website and come back to council. You only run into, um, you only run into a conflict because if, if you are concurring with the hours that are already in eleven, eleven, eight, then all you did was move it from here to here and we're, um, potentially moving forward. Niagara would be held to the most restrictive hours and this process would just kinda move along. If you guys are gonna do something where the, a new fandangle of ours, so to speak, we will still need to come back to council and probably we don't wanna make the change. We'd make the change concurrent with what's coming out of the planning commission.
So basically, in dummy terms, we take eleven point, eleven, eleven, eight. Cut it out, we put it in C under five, five, two, and we don't have to do anything with planning commission because this has already been approved and now we're doing and switching it?
Under almost all of the scenarios, we're gonna have a conflict until we remove the language from the thing. So Niagara will still be under the same restrictive hours that we have them under now until that is resolved. And it doesn't make sense to make the change to five dash, five dash two and we, to do that concurrent with the elimination of the other stuff because you're eliminating the conflict and you're putting whatever you want in place at the same time.
Tom, what is the role of the planning commission in this?
They are required under statute to hold a hearing on it.
Okay. Are they just purely holding the hearing or are they actually like taking any action and making a recommendation to us or?
They could choose to make a recommendation, but technically, anything in five dash, five dash two is outside their purview. That's why we need you guys.
So they're just purely holding the hearing to get feedback? They're not really doing anything in terms of shaping a policy or making a recommendation?
Not, no.
All right, I'm gonna ask a dumb question. Why don't we just hold the hearing?
Because under state law, you can't. It has to go to the planning commission.
Welcome, bureaucracy.
All right. Josh, when you're governor, you're gonna have to deal with that. Okay. Well, I, I guess I'd feel better knowing that until something happens, the Niagara site would be restricted to six. I mean, whether, I, for the whole thing, whether it's six or seven, I mean, to me, that's not a huge differentiator. I don't know. I mean, I can go with either six or seven. I like the idea of having them uniformed. That's, that's my position.
I'm definitely of the opinion of having them uniformed, you know, or uniform one time. You know, I think we debate that time or maybe that's a recommendation the planning commission wants to weigh in on. If that's something that they.
I would say you guys just, because again, that's outside their purview. Really, they're just procedurally holding a hearing. They can make whatever recommendations they want, but ultimately, it's gonna be entirely your decision. So I wouldn't make it messy.
Maybe a hearing isn't a bad idea though. And people can show up and get on record and speak.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a hearing's gonna happen either way.
Right, but the hearing would be, but the hearing would be for the elimination of the hours in eleven, eleven dash eight.
And I'm not comfortable with eliminating it personally. And I've talked to some other people who don't think it's a good idea because eleven dash, eleven dash eight, that's, from my understanding, is environmental protections and that might be important under environmental protections.
It's actually not. In the language, if you guys have hours related to earthwork, whether it's included in the overall hours or separate, it's still in the code and would still be fully applicable and still serve its original intention. It does create the potential for this type of occurrence in the future to have duplication overlapping hours. It's better to have it all in one spot.
And the rest of eleven dash, eleven dash eight will exist. So the environmental protections are not gone.
Okay, so the concerns Gina have will be alleviated. I mean, nothing that she's concerned about will be going away, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just gonna be someplace else.
Are you okay with that, Gina?
I, I don't know.
Part D is gonna be somewhere else?
Yes.
Yes.
Everything else will remain in this.
Right, but part D, I feel like might be under environmental protections for a reason. I understand it's just talking about hours. I understand that. But I would be more comfortable if maybe having a public hearing on that, if that's what needs to happen because I'm not fully comfortable with removing it from eleven, eleven dash eight.
And that's what the hearing would be about, is just the elimination of it. But we would need, the direction from the council at this point in time is important because as part of that, the natural question is, well, then what's gonna happen if that's eliminated? Well, it's addressed over here, but what is that? We need to know what that's gonna say or what the council, what the council's intention is.
Can, can I ask a, another quick question? So if we pull it out of eleven, eleven, eight, sorry. Does the public still, do they lose any rights to noise complaints?
No, it's exactly the same.
Because it's up here, correct? So they're still protected, they're still, okay.
I mean, essentially, you're putting hours of operation, which are handled in chapter five, into the environmental section of the zoning ordinance. It shouldn't be there.
I feel like we're making this as complicated as it could possibly be.
I'm sure we are, but we're.
We want to be sure that the chief has a good, long last meeting.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying, let's just, I would like it if we just, we're uniformed or at least somewhat uniformed with what we communicate to staff and just with what we want and have them figure it out.
I just wanna clarify with the city attorney then, one last time, that if we remove part D from eleven dash, eleven dash eight, it won't have any, it sounds like it won't matter?
That's what I'm hearing.
It, it, it won't matter. I mean, if you take it as it is and you stick it up under five, five, two, it'll have the same impact as it does in eleven, except for it will reduce any confusion that staff has had in the past or that the, uh, police will have if they have to do any enforcement. It's, it's much cleaner to have it all in five, five, two.
Okay, and it won't matter that, the fact that, and it, it sounds like it obviously wasn't intentional, but that technically, this ordinance has already been violated by that Niagara site, right? Since they've worked after six?
They, they did. And they did so because we hadn't, we had advised them as we have other projects for the last twenty years that they could work until ten o'clock under the ordinance. So as soon as we were aware of it, we did provide them with the restricted. We provided an email. Personally, I provided an email to the job supervisor. I've spoken with him personally and directly on this particular issue. There's no lack of clarity and they are happy to comply with whatever the hours are. They were just operating in good faith based on the information they were provided.
That raises a good point from earlier, sorry. It, it was stated, I don't remember who said it, but I mean, this developer subs, whatever, they never, uh, at least as far as I understand, have requested a change to our ordinance, uh, to lengthen it and they complied immediately, right away and completely understood and basically, me paraphrasing, well, it just is what it is and we're gonna do what we have to do. I mean, so, just to be clear, they, they never made any comment or suggested that we change anything and that they were going to comply with whatever we ultimately decide at any point.
Correct, I believe it, we'll do whatever you need us to do until you guys figure it out. I think is as close as I can get to the actual verbiage, so.
So let's figure out our hours and then move forward. Uh, we don't even really need to figure out our hours, do we?
No later than seven, I think. I, I mean, I think five dash, five dash two can be changed from ten BM to seven PM. That would be for construction, I think.
For construction or construction and grading?
I mean, I don't like the fact of allowing grading another hour, but for sake of consistency, I think it would be good to.
I agree with you. And I think, given the fact that there's, there is a process that's gonna have to go through, they're still gonna be, specific to Niagara, they're still gonna be restricted to six and while this process is going on. So I, I can be on board with seven, knowing that, knowing that. Everyone, anyone feel differently? Do you feel like you have direction?
I'm gonna restate it just real quick to make sure it's clear.
That's a really good idea.
So based on council direction, we'll be eliminating hours of, reference to hours of operation in eleven and eleven dash eight. However, we'll be modifying five dash, five dash two for all construction activities to be from seven to seven during weekdays. Um, and then, uh, it's still current, we'll have to make an adjustment on weekends because right now it's nine to nine. We'd make that nine to seven. Or if that's okay with council, that would be the intent. We wouldn't actually bring that change back until we're also bringing back the ordinance amendment to eleven, eleven dash eight. And Niagara and any other con, project that might start in the meantime will be constrained to those tighter hours of operation until all of that is complete.
Is it also going to include in there that there's no activity on holidays like it is currently or not?
Um, that's up to you. That's a good question because right now you currently can, in five dash, five dash two, you can do work on holidays.
No holidays.
No holidays. And I think we should look at maybe no Sundays too, like some cities have.
It's up to you guys.
I'm not opposed to that either.
I would, I would prefer no Sundays and no holidays. If we're going till seven, then I think that these people should at least, neighboring houses should at least have Sundays free and holidays free.
Agreed.
I think it's restrictive, but I think we, I, I think it kinda comes to the point of balancing the fact that we really are a heavy residential drive-through community. And we have to probably be a little bit more restrictive to be responsible to that, I guess. Yeah, I'm on board. No Sundays, no holidays.
Yep.
So someone, just to make it clear, one of you guys in your yard, working on your deck, working, putting up a shed, digging a hole in your backyard, put up a volleyball court.
Yep.
You want.
Can't do it on Sunday.
You cannot work on your house on a Sunday.
That's a good point, so residential.
Okay, so it's.
Landscaping is not construction.
Like there's this like domestic power equipment section in here.
That would be more, that would be lawnmowers and whatnot.
That's a really good point.
Painting is construction.
So we.
You got a pressure, you got a pressure painting.
Gee, if you had to open your mouth.
I mean.
Any.
I've been there, I've been there and walked to somebody.
Yep.
Working on their front door, putting in their front door on a Sunday because it broke. They can't do it.
Then can we specify?
Yeah.
If it's already a constructed building or?
No.
Why not?
Define construction.
Construction would be any noise activity that, I mean.
If you're swinging a hammer, you, a storm came through and you're trying to fix a leak or just you got a leak in your house. You're up on the roof pulling shingles on a Sunday because it's finally nice. You can't do that.
Well, it applies to electric, diesel, gas-powered or other power equipment.
That's grading, but construction work is swinging hammers.
That, that's, that's how it defines construction work.
Okay.
I mean, others.
But that could be a weed whip.
And a contractor, as long as they weren't doing that.
Household power equipment.
But this is part of the problem.
But, but, so.
It's not that.
Yeah, so that, the idea is that when you're thinking of those activities, it's not, we can't be focused on it's just this one project. It applies across the board to all projects now and into the future. Homeowners' activities, so if it's, so it's a good point. If it's Sunday and I'm gonna get the power auger to go and drill the holes for my deck because I need to get it done this weekend because graduation party's coming up or whatever, they can't do it.
Now you can't mow your lawn.
Yes, you can.
No, 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 you can't. In noise ordinances and stuff like that, you cannot create noise before seven o'clock. So that applies to a homeowner.
Yeah.
I can't rip my riding lawnmower at six o'clock. I stop that all the time. But it's these other things when you're on your home on your weekend, when you have time, you can't build that shed in your backyard.
So the spirit of what we're trying to communicate is addressing construction, whether it be Niagara, whether it be street construction, whether it be whatever. We're, we're not, we're not trying to specify what someone would do on their own property, on their constructed house, if they're doing stuff with a deck or what have you. How can we do this?
Move up into the country.
Amy, I love you, but you can't. You guys gotta, you guys gotta stop or we're gonna recess the meeting, so.
Um, I don't think you can because there's, there's a reasonable of, of, um, of equity related to it. Construction activity is construction activity. Arguably, it doesn't matter whether I'm working on my house myself or I have contractors re-roofing my house with power nailers and everything else or it's happening on the commercial building a block away, it's still construction activity. And I think it would be hard for us to defend, if challenged, that there's a difference between the two because the exit, the activity is the same.
The noise is generally the same.
Is the same. So how, just because I'm doing it on my house and I'm doing it and a commercial contractor's doing it a block away, it's different, it's not.
I know other cities do it. Other cities have nothing on Sundays. What if we?
They, they do. We're just, the chief is just pointing out.
Right.
That you have to be prepared that the police department will have to enforce that somebody can't work on their roof on Sunday.
What if we specified no earthwork and hauling operations or dirt work on Sundays?
Correct, so then you get back to not have, that you would pull that type of activity out. We're just saying that sometimes it's hard, it may be hard for an officer in the field to define.
Yeah, you're right.
Whether they're putting the pipe in the ground, is it, you know, is it grading or is it construction?
So much of it goes on.
Yeah.
Building decks on the weekend.
Yeah.
It's like the American.
And, and not that I wanna say, I'll just say whatever I'm gonna say. Is it a complaint-based enforcement or is it a proactive enforcement? Because, you know, right, so, you know, am I gonna be inclined to, to complain about my neighbor putting up his deck or working on his deck on Sunday at noon? Maybe if it's a Vikings game and they're actually winning, I might care, but they wouldn't probably be doing that in the fall and winter, but anyway.
Josh, think of that as the ATV. Is it illegal or is it not? Are we gonna come across it?[1788.34] Is it illegal or is it not? Are we gonna come across it? What do you expect out of us, you know, and that's where it's so tough. A dude that works Monday through Friday and is, or a gal, and trying to build their deck, I would have to go up to him and go, stop, or I'm gonna give you a ticket. And that, that really does.
The, the, the number of.
Summer is when we build things in Minnesota typically, because you can't in the winter outside.
A lot of the home.
That's why it's usually longer in the summer, is because there's more daylight, there's more time to do these things.
A lot of home improvement permits come in for stuff that people are doing on the weekend, or on holidays, or holiday weekends.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I guess I go back to maybe what we've been talking, I mean, a lot of cities are not required. I'd be curious how things go, and why is that at Eden Prairie and others that specifically say nothing on Sundays, and how many complaints they're getting, I mean, what they're forcing.
We got them all the time, and we had to shut down people's buildings and doing their personal stuff on a holiday or a Sunday, and we have to go, man, sorry about that. You have to stop.
Talk to your city council.
Yep.
So, okay, what about if we just, I'm sorry, don't hate me, what if we just left it in eleven, eleven, eight as earth hauling can't be done? And then the construction end of it?
So eleven, eleven, eight only applies to grading permits. If somebody has a building permit, that's not a grading permit. They can operate under the normal hours. That's part of the, the conflict in the.
I know, I, I, I remember now, sorry.
You just wanna drag it out of there.
Do you guys finish everything up?
No.
Completely solved. We wrote it, basically.
Perfect.
And there's no way to say that it would be commercial construction versus home improvement construction?
The hammer, a hammer's a hammer, and nail gun's a nail gun. I think.
You can't have different sections in there.
I think there's an issue with intellectual honesty if we had to defend that in court.
Yes.
Because if I'm paying somebody to do my deck, or I'm building my deck, should it be a difference if I'm having a business do it, you know, or whatever?
What about just the grading, though? Grading operations, not on Sunday?
Yeah.
Those hours be moved to section five, still reference if a grading permit is involved. These are the hours for grading operations, and nothing else changes. I mean, even the way it's written, if you set it at six PM, I can give the contractor an exemption to work all night. I want to, the way it's written right now, in five dash, whatever.
I, so one thing that we need to point out is that we recognize this is a special situation, but we've currently had the seven to ten for two decades. Never got a complaint.
Let's, let's not go there.
I know, I'm just, what I'm saying is, if we, what I'm saying is, if we, and I'm just gonna suggest this to try and move this to conclusion, there's all these extra limitations. If we go with just hours that feel are acceptable under most conditions, like seven to seven, seven to eight, seven to six, whatever it is, let's just go with, I suggest, let's just go with that and see if it becomes problematic. The sun, where, I think all staff is pointing out is, when it comes to actual enforcement of it, it starts to become problematic, and you may now start move away, moving away from trying to protect the original intent of the ordinance, of trying to protect individuals from nuisances of other properties, and now starting to, you're starting to potentially create the nuisance for the normal, for other people.
Really, we're talking about Sundays and holidays. I mean, we're in agreement on everything.
Well, and correctly, I mean, even like with these big projects, you know, my understanding from the pre-construction meeting, or whatever that was called, they weren't planning on ever working on Sundays, and I don't know if that was specified in any permit or anything like that, but could we specify it in a permit?
Then we, then we'd have to put in language that says.
To defend that, or justify that, or whatever.
I'm still curious how other cities do it. What if we made it like nine to six on Saturday and Sundays?
You know, we, we can go back to this at any time.
And fix it, or change it.
Change it, yeah. I mean, to your point, Gina, about seeing what other cities do, I mean, I, I kind of agree with you, but at the same time, I understand staff is very knowledgeable about this, so I don't wanna really get into this back and forth necessarily, but it would be good to know what other cities are doing to enforce things. But we don't have to know that right now. We, knowing that we can go back and we can change this whenever we want, let's just, let's make a decision for today on Sundays and holidays.
Okay, I still say no Sundays and no holidays.
I say, I say no grading on Sundays and holidays.
I will say no earth hauling on Sundays and holidays.
Gosh, man.
I might wanna put up a shed.
Yeah, the grading piece, no Sundays, holidays, I think that works for me. I think a lot of homeowners are working on Sundays, so I don't want to restrict that.
Josh?
I, I would lean towards that, if anything, because I just, I don't think we need to get that restrictive. I don't think there's gonna be contractors and folks working on Sundays and holidays, because they gotta pay their workers more, they gotta, it's just extra cost and everything anyway. So I don't think we're gonna see that option, but I don't wanna screw it up for homeowners and others to be able to do stuff, to what chief brought up, and cost this to go further.
So hours are uniformed. The only difference is Sundays and holidays are restricted on, when it comes to grading and report. Is that?
Yep, seven to, and seven to seven is the, during the week, and seven, and nine to seven on weekends.
Yep.
Okay, that's very clear.
Okay.
And that's, thank you.
We got through it, everyone. What's, anything else for administration?
Do you want something, Mr. Mayor?
Not really.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
Public works, anything to pass on?
No.
Police department, your, your last update, your last report.
Nothing unless you have questions.
Wow, going out with a bang.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking, I still gotta take down all this crap on the wall.
Somebody else can do it.
Engineering.
I have nothing unless anybody has questions.
I mean, we're still street reconstruction, there's no delays, we're still.
Every time it rains, it's a delay.
Okay, fair enough.
So you can just look up when it's raining, say, another delay.
Yeah, all right.
Process usually a day, day and a half.
But nothing else is troublesome at this point?
The problem's, I mean, they're often looking hard.
Right.
They're diligently pursuing the work. I can't complain about how they're going after it. And I think it's going to be done well before the completion dates. Maybe pretty, looking pretty good at this pace by the end of June.
Yeah, nice. Community development.
You might be aware that the planning department or community development has been outdoing our city, our annual spring cleanup code enforcement. They'll wrapping, letters are going out at this time. We'll be wrapping that up this week. There's a planning commission meeting on Tuesday. There is a concept development plan that has been submitted for an eighty-nine lot residential development on the southwest portion of the community. And that's just a concept plan review, so there's no public hearing. And also, on the agenda is a continued public hearing for this property located north of city hall. And finally, discussion regarding detached accessory structures, and whether we should be amending our code to be more lenient regarding detached accessory structures.
Thank you. Parks, there was a report, anything additional? Well, all right. CCC.
We did not meet. I don't have anything.
Okay. Scale, no meeting for the next couple of weeks. Anything for service delivery?
Yes, actually, I do have a report this time. Two topics really of note. The primary topic was presentation of the first level of study from the consultant that was hired by Scale to take a look at the possibility of doing a, a consolidation, I'm trying to remember the word exactly, but basically, a coordinated self-insured pool where all the cities and possibly some other entities in Scott County would go together with the county to try and provide for better and more controlled health and, you know, insurance rates going forward. The county has been, they believe, successful doing it. The city of Shakopee was very interested in doing it, because they've seen a lot of hikes in their rates in recent years. The initial study was just taking a look at the overall pool compared to the overall pool, and it does indicate some benefits to it. The next level of analysis is then going out to the individual cities and saying, okay, this is what it would mean for you based on your history and, and whatnot. So that's still forthcoming. Once that study's been completed, and get more information, probably come back and have a, and we've consumed it internally as staff, we'll come back to the council with presentation of the information and recommendations on next steps, if any. The other item was, I talked to the other cities in the county currently, or I should say, for the last nearly thirty years, open burning permits, so this would be not your recreational fire, but the brush pile fires, mostly for township residents. Those permits are the responsibility of the jurisdiction, which provides fire service. So for us, it would be the city, all of New Market Township and a portion of Cedar Lake Township issue those permits, and they're an annual permit, and they're fairly straightforward. Because when the current chief became chief, city hall was only open two and a half days a week, and there was no staff hardly. Those permits were issued out of his business's office in town, and have been for twenty-plus years. With him not going to be chief forever, he's looking, looked to move those permits to city hall. I had encouraged him multiple times in the past to do that, but he's like, well, the people who live out in the township who are generally older are used to doing it this way, and it'll be more hassle to make the change than before we have to. It's not gonna be possible to do in the future. As we had our staff take a look at it, one of the things that we found is that a number of city, a number of counties in the state actually issue their permits through the DNR. So what it does is it removes the front counter burden from those individual cities of having to process this, and Todd has told me that we annually process three to four hundred of these a year. And so, this is a more way, people can do it from home, they can do it at any time of day, they don't have to go anywhere to get it, they can just do it online. So I spoke with the county and other cities about exploring it. The other cities are gonna talk to their fire departments, take a look at their internal process, and the county's gonna look at whether or not they do it. It would require them to host basically the link on their, on the county's website, and then people click on that, it'll take them to the DNR's website, they pay five bucks, and they just fill out the, the permit.
How long is the turnaround rate for a DNR to get back to somebody with their permit?
They're done.
That's essentially it?
Yeah, it's, it's like some other state permits, it's issued at time. The way the permit is generally structured is, here's your permit, you just need to comply with these rules, and then you need to call dispatch before you start to burn. So, we're just looking at it. I think it would be a way to take administrative burden, not only off of us, but also off of the other cities, provide greater convenience and consistency for individuals. If everybody in the county is going to the county's website, because right now, you have people who aren't in our fire district coming to us, because they don't know where to go to get their fire permit, and we have to figure out where they live, it would simplify a lot of that. So just one of the things we do at service delivery of trying to figure out a way to do it more efficiently, and that was pretty much the whole meeting this month.
I like that.
Thirty-five solutions.
No meeting.
Discussion by council.
I was just gonna say, Tom, any update regarding the municipal cannabis stuff, or the subgroup work group thing that is willing, worth sharing at this point, or not?
Well, so legislation was passed. Our, the lobbying efforts that we, as a city, took the lead on were successful in that it basically secured an almost guaranteed license for municipalities if they chose to open a municipal dispensary. So rather than trying to change our prioritization relative to other licensees, we essentially carved out there's just a separate single license for municipalities in, in practice. There is some qualifying language in there that how that plays out will have to be vetted in the rules and in practice in the future. But now, we as a city, if we wanna pursue that discussion, can move forward with a reasonable assumption that we'd be able to get a license, where before, it was very iffy and probably unlikely. So we've been successful there. We are still, we're preparing to tentatively bring the topic back to the council in June or early July to have a discussion of, this is where we are, this is what we know, this is what we don't know. If you guys wanna go further, this is what it's gonna take. So we're in the process of pulling that known information together to get into the feasibility market study aspect of it. That's gonna require hiring a specialized consultant that works in that field, that does that work. It's simply too specialized and beyond the knowledge of staff. We feasibly couldn't research that and bring it back in a way with a level of confidence within any reasonable timeframe on the topic. So we're in the process of getting a budget and scope for that kind of work to bring back at the same time, so we know what it would take to go to the next level, at least for part of that. So more to come on it, but that would be probably the next step in our decision process.
Thank you for your work on this, on that topic.
I think a lot of credit has to go to council member Berg, who acted as the point up at, up in St. Paul. Staff simply provided the communications with her partners in kind of the back room role, but the front line was really Josh, so.
Just accept the thank you.
Thank you to all involved. Thank you, Josh.
And I'll let Brandon know, he did a lot of work on this.
Any other discussion by council, or motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kate. I'll second it. Second by me, all on safety.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.